I'm not invisible with the name of Justice Serrano.
Just key in the roll, please.
Kerry Hodges, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tomspire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lloyd Crutt, Ward 7.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First item is the approval of council meeting minutes from our June 2 meeting. Councils had this well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any motions, additions, corrections, or otherwise conversation.
Mayor, I didn't see any corrections or additions. Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any applause like sign? Is that a for or a against? I caught you, didn't I? Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a couple of sec-- we actually have a set of three second readings tonight. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on the first item, the amendment to our charter.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a second reading of this. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. As you're aware, C. Carter's was required to submit a new board map based on the 2010 census, population distribution. Additionally, adoption of a board map requires the amendment of the charter for state law, and that's why this process is going on right now. Again, there's been a timeframe that it can set going through. If it gets through Department of Justice by a certain date, be able to utilize these new board maps for the next election cycle. And with that, we recommend this be your.
Any questions for Randy on this item at this point? Seeing none, thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for anybody wishing to speak on the topic of this amendment to the city charter regarding our award redistricting. Anybody wishing to speak on that item may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the amendment to the city charter. And Chair will entertain any discussion or motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2012. Tom.
Hello, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking the Department Director for their help in the budget process this year. It was a lot smoother going with those than I would say. Thank you very much for those. I also appreciate their being patient with me and all the questions they've asked. We'll get started with the fiscal year 2012 budget proposal. First line demonstrates that the budget increases from last year to this year by $15,276,000. This is a 10.72% increase. Houses of the budget are-- it's a balanced budget. There's no city property taxes increase. It's a continuation of the five-year capital plan. There is a small increase in water and sewer rates. There is some debt issued in the water fund. There is some debt issued in the SPOSS fund. It incorporates the recycling program, and there are 15 additions that have been added. Those are 12 firefighters to be hired in April of 2012, one in stormwater, one in public works, and one in solid waste to be hired for half of the year. Budget comparison from last year to this year. By fund, the general fund has increased to $2.8 million. Electric is increased $447,000. Fire optics increased $97,000. Gas fund decreased a little over $1 million. Solid waste increased $427,000. Stormwater decreased $25,000. Water and sewer increased $4.29 million. Internal service fund, which is our garage fund, increased $151,000. And the two SPOSS accounts, SPOSS 2003 increased $1.5 million, and SPOSS 2007 increased $6.5 million. A grand total of $15.276 million. Break down by budget comparison type, you look at the personnel. It increased from last year to this year $1.68 million. Operating costs increased to $1.96 million. Purchases of commodities decreased $756,000. School board appropriations decreased $76,000. DDA property taxes increased slightly $320. Debt service decreased $399,000. And the biggest piece of the pie, which is the capital area, increased $12.823 million. Transfers to the general fund also increased $38,000. This is an illustration of the last eight years budget comparison and the proposed 2012. You'll see that in 2008, we were up to $168 million. 2009 was $169.5 million. We decreased in 2010 and 2011 to slightly over $148,000. In 2010, $144 million. In 2011, and the proposed budget for 2012 is $157.7 million. Our stopping levels, you'll see in 2008 and 2009, we're up at 364 employees and 367 employees, respectively. In 2010, 2011, we decreased to 345 employees. And in 2012, we're adding 15 to bring it to a total of 360 employees.
It's worth noting that 12 of those are because of the opening of the combined police, fire, and open-up fire station. There'll be fire station four. And, uh...
Sorry.
See me in my office after the meeting.
That was not me. That was not me.
I'm shocked it wasn't Keith. Anyway, that's a result of the building of the fire stations that were approved as part of the SPOSS.
And they will not be hired, the SPOSS will not be hired until April 2012. Continuing on the City County Corporation, we share the expenses of a grant rider. We share expenses of the Capital America Keep America Beautiful. We share expenses with the City County Mapping and Phone System, and also economic development. Next slide illustrates the outside agency history. You'll note that the second column is the funds proposed in the, or included in the proposed fiscal year 12 budget. They totaled $784,200, and it is the same dollar amount that was in the fiscal year We'll put a little comparison to have next. Even though we are increasing or proposing an increase in the water and sewer fund rates, water and sewer--
He's doing that.
The water and sewer fund residential rates, we still will be below the surrounding areas. You'll note the first two, to the far left, is the Carvel current and the Carvel proposed rates for the residential. Next one will be the commercial customers. We're still in the top two of those. You'll note that the Dalton Utilities is slightly below us. And along those lines--
It'll technically be the bottom two.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The top two and low-cost provider.
Right, yes. And along those lines, the electric, you'll notice that in the black is the Carvel Electric System, and the red is Georgia Power. And once again, this is for residential customers. And finally, our gas system. For the top grade January 1st, 2010, through December 31st, 2010, again residential, you'll notice that we're at 1.29 thames, and the rest of them range anywhere from 1.56 to 1.69 thames. So once again, we are lower than our competitors. And with that, that is my presentation. I do recommend approval of the proposed 2012 budget.
Questions for Tom on any of the items on that budget?
Just mention a couple things on this and the water rate, one that comes afterward. We're still under the conservation rates that the state's requiring us to adopt. And also, the firefighters and the outside chance we could save for grant, that could back that money out of the budget that pays for the 12 firefighters.
My recollection is a safer grant. We are still on the running. There's been no yes or no.
Yeah, Chief.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? There's no discussion. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign?
opposed.
And motion carries 5-1. Next item is an amendment to our utilities ordinance regarding water and sewer rates. Tom?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is in order to balance the fiscal year 2012 budget, where in the water and sewer fund, we had to increase the rates by a 5% proposed increase. The increase will allow the city to continue to maintain the existing system, as well as update the system by completing projects that are needed to fulfill the needs of the existing customers. Slide show real quick. You'll note on the first slide, it is a 5% increase. It is due to increased operations and maintenance cost. It will add approximately $1.50 per month for average residential customer, and this is based on 7,500 gallons consumed. We will remain one of the lowest rates in the surrounding area. It is not associated with the decrease in the capacity fees. And the tiered rates that we're hearing so much about have been mandated by the state in efforts to conserve the water. Now, my slide is, again, just presenting the total water and sewer comparison for the residential folks. And I recommend approval of the proposed water and sewer rate increase to basically go on the bench a lot more.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tom, or is there any discussion?
Just one question, sort of backing up, actually just one page in our thing to page 33 is, the water and sewer is like, it says the revenue is about $19 million. Does that, would that be basically, if you took 5% off of that, is that, does that directly correlate with the 5%?
No, because some of that, some of that funding has got bond issuance in it, around about $5 million of those bond issuance.
Okay. But the rest would be, would we basically increase?
Yes. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we have cut the capacity fees in half. Those are paid at the time people add capacity or get a billing permit, and that's got nothing to do with this. I think sometimes people get confused when they saw us cut that in half, and they think their water rates ought to come down. They're two different things. That's not this.
Correct. Any other questions for Tom, or any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the water rate as presented. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. We have zoning application 11-03. First reading of this ordinance, rezoning application. Mr. Manino, if you'll start us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As with the next case on the agenda, they have been properly advertised and posted, and there appears to be no conflicts, and they've been reviewed based on the standards that's set forth in our zoning ordinance. This case, the 11-03 is a request to rezone property from the OC Office Commercial Zoning District to the GC General Commercial District, based on the standards for zoning powers that we have reviewed and changing factors in that particular area, some of them being recent development, including RVs, CVS, and Zaxby's out in that particular area, the roadway becoming a four-lane median divided highway and so forth. Based on that, staff did recommend approval of this application. We had a public hearing before the planning commission. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this application also.
Any questions for Randy on this item? Seeing none, I'll open up a public hearing for this zoning application, 11-03. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember.
State your name for the--
The applicant.
Thank you.
Although I've not been here that much, I--
We've missed you, Jeff.
Yes, and I have missed you all. Unbeknownst to my client, the property was not zoned for the car auto sales. It's located there, and a neighboring property owner that leases to the same type of tenant, I think, called the zoning office and complained, which then, when my client was informed of, he contacted me and we filed the application. We would ask that you approve this. They are the same type of use, although in the area, you'll affect the roadway 113, less stat, and the commercial issue. Or we believe it is the highest and best use. And I would ask that you approve it. I may have to answer any questions, reserve it for the sound.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Watkins at this point?
Is that an LSU tie that you got on there?
You know, my dad told me, he don't wear a dark picture.
You got the rock color right now.
It is an SEC. I think you're not bugging.
I got a question. It might not be for Jeff, it might be more for Randy, or just the city question in general. Didn't they have to apply for a business license?
When we had a complaint, turned into the city, went out and investigated it, our code enforcement officer had discovered a license that was issued by the county. A large portion of this property is actually in the county, and when the road was relocated, the small corner there is actually in the city. So when we discovered that it was actually licensed in the county, we went ahead, contacted the owner and the occupant of that particular business, and that's got us to this point. We are now trying to straighten out, issue, get a-- we could not issue a city license. They do not have the correct zoning, and there are other issues. We didn't actually issue any citations, because they've attempted to correct the situation that occurred. But there was a license, they had a dealership license issued that the county had signed on.
And then just one more question, and I think it's for you, Mr. Watkins.
Not my question.
This one may be simple. Once the rezoning takes place, your client understands that the use or the development regulations that he may have complied with in the county, he would, there would not be grandfathering. He would have to comply with the city development regulations and whatever changes may be required for the business or how it's set up or operated.
The client has to comply with whatever it says he's complying with.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Watkins? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Once again, a public hearing concerning case 11-03. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. This is the first reading. No vote required at this time. We'll take this up at our first meeting in July. Our next item is SU 11-01.
Thank you again, Mayor. This application is a request for a special use permit for a salvage yard in the heavy industrial zoning district. As you recall, back in September last year, we amended the zoning ordinance. Salvage yard used to be a use allowed by right in the heavy industrial zoning district, and the planning commission went through some of the uses and placed this one in the special use category, so every individual case that comes through would actually go through the process to be reviewed. With that, the applicant was seeking to locate there toward West Porter, North Irwin Street, or this particular salvage yard. There's certain criteria that goes along with the special use. Of that criteria, two of the criteria were unable to be met by the applicant, so the applicant is also requesting variances to the special use criteria, one of them being a requirement for a 20-acre size, and the other requirement was for buffering. They're looking to reduce the buffering, and then with that, installing a screening-type fencing material, which was displayed and shown to the planning commission. With that, planning commission held a public hearing, reviewed it based on the scope and intent and requirements of special use as placed in our zoning ordinance, and the planning commission did unanimously recommend denial of this application. The application did include certain material that we were looking for before the hearing. However, the applicant did provide and show data to the planning commission that was not included, that staff had not reviewed at the time, that we had submitted our data to the planning commission. So if the applicant's here, he probably have the same data to present to you, but I do not see the applicant here.
Okay. Any questions? You don't want the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item?
I do, Mayor. Randy, there's, let's see, there's three standards that they would be going for variance for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In reality--
There are three major standards. You have a group of standards for all special uses, and then there are three specific ones for salvage yard. Of those three, they're looking to vary two of them.
Okay. In reality, on that piece of property, as I'm visualizing it, if they comply, first of all, we're going from 20 to less than five acres there.
That is correct. The requirement is for 20 acres for a salvage yard. That's been in our ordinance for several years. Even prior to the requirement of the special use, they did have, they did require 20 acres. And they are looking to reduce it to 4.93 acres.
And don't you have a hillside there coming from Porter?
Yes, coming down Porter Street. It does kind of overlook that entire site. If you're looking to your left, going down Porter Street towards the intersection with Irwin, it will overlook that.
So your buffer and fencing would be even inside the 4.9? I mean, I'm just trying to think through how you would even make that--
Yes.
Okay.
Fencing and buffering there. Again, coming down Porter, you're going to be able to look into the site no matter what as you approach the intersection coming down there.
Okay.
You can see the bridge back there, left bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll look over the site.
Any other questions for Randy? Okay.
Now, the log cabin is part of--
The log cabin is part of the overall property. It is zoned in U multiple use. They can utilize an office in that particular location.
But that's included in the 4.9 acres, the log cabin?
Yes. There is split zoning on the property.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 11-01. Anybody wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on SU 11-01. We'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in July, and maybe the applicant will be here to answer some of those questions that you have, Ms. Tate. I would look forward to hearing those.
What we've done, the variances will be heard prior to the next, the secondary. I did not note that there's not a variance at the problem.
Okay. Thank you. We have a resolution concerning the DOT. Mr. Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Actually, there are three documents in this packet, two from Georgia DOT and one from the Federal Highway Administration. They have requested that the city and county sign or execute these documents in order to make several changes to the state route system numbering conjunction with State Route 20 project and the US 411 project. A notice of intent from Georgia DOT has noticed that they intend to make several changes to the state route system, mostly involving removing state route designations to concurrent routes and adding them to new routes. Local state route acceptance resolution is a resolution that basically says the city will take a portion of the new alignment of the state route 20 when it's constructed. Actually, it's less than a half a mile of new roadway. And the federal aid highway resolution covers the same routes as the notice of intent and the local state route acceptance resolution to clarify which routes belong to the national highway system. And we recommend approval, and of course, you know, federal funds may be tied up in this if we don't proceed with it.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Elliott on this item?
Just a real quick question I forgot to ask in the work session, and I apologize. Where's the half-mile that's in the city?
Right by the conference center.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking. That's it. Okay. All right, thanks.
Just doesn't have anything to do with 411, does it?
I don't think so, Sam.
This has all to do with Georgia 20 going to 411. This has nothing to do with--
That's the only thing that gave me pause on it.
Bobby, do any dollars follow us taking that half a mile of 20 upkeep dollars, I mean?
If we don't take it, they won't do the project.
Well, it's less than a half a mile of, and it will be brand-new roadway, built to GDOT standards, so Tommy and I don't cringe very much on that. It's--
It's the type of roadway that typically in the past that GDOT has provided funding to local communities for when it needs for resurfacing and general maintenance every three or four years.
That was my question.
All right. Any other questions for Bobby on this?
I have lots of hats.
If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is an amendment to the sewer service agreement in Emerson.
Mayor, I guess I'll speak on that. We currently have a sewer service agreement--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Skip the bonds.
I skipped one. I apologize. I just went all over the place, didn't I?
Wow.
Yeah, I was trying to get through this a little too quickly. Oh, back up a little bit. And the next item is a resolution for the approval of school bonds. Harry, I should have saw when you-- hair stood straight up, but I did something wrong.
I may be here later anyway to get your signature, but this, my name's Harry White, and I'm here asking for your approval on joint supplemental resolution between the City of Carvel and Carvel School Board concerning the issuance of $13,380,000 for the City of Carvel General Obligation Bonds, Series 2011, in order to refinance, pay off existing bonds that were created back in 2001 and 2002. The principal interest and closing cost on this date is the $13,380,000. Couple advantages to the school board in approving this issuance would be, first of all, it saves the school system approximately $500,000. Almost $500,000 went there, able to be paid off in 2015, as well as allowing the school system to possibly become debt-free in 2015 if the funds are available. So I would ask that you recommend, I would recommend approval of this joint resolution, the title of which is on the document that has been provided to you, along with the issue, the execution of the bond purchase agreement, escrow agreement, and the continuing disclosure statement, all documents relating to the bond issue.
Any questions for Mr. White?
Mr. White, do you need us to read the heading into the record?
I would like the heading or the title of the resolution to be read into the record.
You can go ahead and read it for us.
I'd be happy to, so. I move for a motion to adopt the joint supplemental resolution of the City Council and the Carvel School Board, providing for, number one, the approval of the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, providing for the sale of $13,380,000 of City of Carvel General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2011. Two, the naming of an authenticating agent, bond registrar, and paying agent for said bonds. Three, the adoption of a form to which said bonds shall adhere. Four, the preparation of tax digest and the levy of tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Five, the approval, execution, and delivery of the official statement relating to said bonds. Six, the execution and delivery of said bonds. Seven, the refunding of the $10 million City of Carvel General Obligation Bonds, Series 2001. And two, $6 million City of Carvel General Obligation Bonds, Series 2002, and for other related purposes.
Mayor, just to sort of summarize for y'all, basically what happened is, back in 2001 and 2002, we issued bonds on behalf of the school system for various projects. They are now able to call them and refund them and get a lower interest rate and lower payout over time. Documents are standard for review, and when you actually approve this resolution, you're authorizing them to go ahead with the validation and everything else related to the bond issue. You're approving the bond purchase agreement. You're approving the debt schedule, which basically lays out how it will be paid off over the year. over the years. You're approving the school board's authority to actually levy a mill for doing this payment off in the future. And it's the same thing you basically approved for them in two thousand one and two thousand two. You're just refunding it and making it a little cheaper in the long run.
And you could save five hundred thousand dollars, and also the contingency provision that we can pay it off in two thousand fifteen or two thousand seventeen, prior to the maturity date, which is set at two thousand twenty-two. But again, it was significant savings to the city as well as the school board.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments? If not, chair, will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. White.
I will submit the documents for your signature as soon as I have them.
Thank you. The next item is a contracts for performing services.
Honorable mayor and council, these seven contracts are for those agencies that have been approved for the funding, the Carl, City of Carlsville fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget. The amount approved is the same as last year. Those amounts are as follows. Carlsville Barto Library, four hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Barto Juvenile Court, fifteen thousand dollars. Barto Health Access, two thousand dollars. Cultural Arts Alliance, fifty-one thousand dollars. Good Neighbor House, two thousand dollars. Downtown Development Authority, eighty-five thousand dollars. And Barto County Library Incorporated, twelve hundred dollars. The contracts have been reviewed by the city attorney's office. We do have current E-verify and safe documents on file, and I do recommend this, these seven contracts for your approval.
Okay. Kind of holding the line steady from what we did last year. Are there any questions or comments or discussion needed? If not, chair, will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. We've got ICMA performance measurement next on the list.
The mayor just skipped something.
Wow, I tell you what.
Whenever he wants me to talk, I'll be able to.
I apologize. We changed some things up in the work session, and so some of my numbers, or some of my, my labeling is off a little bit. I apologize for that. Yeah, that iPhone's messing me up. Keith, go right ahead, sir, with that. Plus, I want to make our new dead Tom Quist a little uncomfortable getting up there for no reason. Go ahead, Mr. Lovell.
Mayor and council, as y'all know, we currently have a sewer agreement with the City of Emerson, which we provide them capacity of currently one million gallons per day. They have a right to go up to an additional million gallons per day under certain conditions. As y'all have all probably heard about, they have, they're negotiating with this company called Lake Point to put a huge sporting and residential and commercial complex down there. They are going to need approximately one point eight five million gallons per day capacity at their build-out. One of the things that they have asked Emerson and Carlsville, if they would, to increase Emerson's current allotment to provide for that in the future. That is what this amendment does. If for some reason unforeseen that the Lake Point deal does not go through or anything, this capacity will go back to the previous levels of two million instead of the new level of three, three point eight five million. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Okay.
And that still allows us a great deal of capacity for the several log industries.
How much capacity we got, Ed? How much, how much, how much extra?
We absorb this, these...
Okay.
Millions.
About half the plant's full, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no discussion. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Tom Quist.
Can I speak?
ICMA Performance Measurement.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's that time of year again. We're up for our annual renewal of our contract with the ICMA Center for Performance Measurement. We've been working with ICMA CPM for the past five years or so. What we do is we submit various performance indicators from our, all of our departments within the city. All this information is sent to CPM. They get this information from all sorts of cities and counties all across the city, and it allows us to compare our performance with all those cities all across the country. So it's a good way for us to kind of keep an eye on, you know, how we're doing relative to others around the country. It's also, provides us a good network of other like-minded cities that are focused on increasing operational performance and efficiency. We've actually been recognized for our efforts in this area of performance measurement with multiple awards, but most recently, we received the highest honor provided by them, the Certificate of Excellence of Performance Measurement, and we anticipate receiving that again this year. In fact, our application's been waived due to our previous success, and we're actually going to be offering webinar to other cities to kind of pass along to best practices. So real proud of our efforts. We'd like to keep it up. The cost for this contract with them is five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and it is a budgeted item. Your approval is recommended.
Any questions for Tom on this? And if there are no questions or comments, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is lighting design services.
Yes, sir. If you recall, approximately a year ago, the City of Carlsville was awarded an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. We submitted an application which included several different components, one of which is we are attempting to retrofit or upgrade all the lighting and virtually all of the municipal facilities owned by the City of Carlsville. In order to do the best possible job at this, we've decided to pursue a lighting design. So we're gonna have a team come in and analyze each of the facilities to make sure that it's designed appropriately, to operate efficiently and effectively, so that you're getting the right amount of light, not too much, not too little, with the best technology available. So this expense is covered by the grant. It's fully reimbursable. We put out a bid, got three bids, and the lowest and best bid was the same thing, and it's with Spencer Bristol. They bid in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars, and they're gonna be putting together this lighting design for us, and ultimately, what we'll end up with as a deliverable will be a biddable contract that we can then bid out to construction companies to actually implement, excuse me, implement the work.
Okay. Questions on this item?
So, just one quick question. So the goal would be the biddable contract would be in the amount of the grant, so we're looking at, of course, staying within that budgetary parameter?
Correct, yes. The grant was for three hundred thousand, and we had several different components within the grant. This, this aspect is one of the components that we had budgeted for. It's kind of like an audit, but it's a little bit more intensive than a lighting audit, and we anticipate spending, depending on how, how much the other items within that three hundred thousand cost, I'm estimating right now about two hundred and forty thousand dollars to put towards the actual upgrades. We're setting it up as a revolving loan fund so that the, the funds that we spend on, for instance, lighting upgrades, that'll save us money on utilities. So those savings will be redirected back into this fund for use in future energy efficiency projects such as HVAC. So it's a really good way to kind of keep some funds dedicated to the purpose of being green, so.
That's great. Okay, great.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one, Mayor. Tom, as I look at this, at this scope of services, how, how did you decide, or how did the city decide, you know, Dillinger Park versus someplace else?
Uh, well, basically, everything is included.
Is it?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, every, every single municipal, municipal facility will be analyzed by this firm, including every outdoor restroom at Dillinger Park and all the little sheds and pump stations and things like that, the wastewater treatment plant. We really want to attack everything. One thing that that allows us to do is streamline our inventory so that we don't have some buildings that use old bulbs, so we don't have to stock those anymore if we've got a consistent, you know, type of lighting, for instance, throughout. And, you know, each different place may require a different approach. Some types of lighting are more appropriate for different...
So we don't have any building or any recreational area that's left out?
Uh, no, the only thing that is left out that I can think of, we're not necessarily gonna approach, like, field lighting, like the big lights, anything like that, but anything that's like inside a building or lights just on the exterior, but none of those big, you know, stadium-type lights.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, chair will entertain a, oh, you've got a question?
I want to offer a motion.
Please do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item, I do believe.
Yes, Mayor. Current life insurance and accident on death and dismemberment and long-term disability, we have coverage for employees that are under the retirement, under the ten-year vesting plan. We've been with Fort Dearborn for the past couple of years. Looking at this with our agent, at renewal time, Fort Dearborn was gonna go up in the life insurance in AD&amp;D. Looked at a couple of different products. Unum came in at a lower rate on the life in AD&amp;D and with LTD rate. I recommend going with the Unum proposal. It'll save us about twelve thousand five hundred dollars annually on this, these premiums.
Okay.
Just one second. I mean, I know on this, and it's separate than our, their medical, who we use for that, there's not much that goes into this. I mean, this is pre-shelf product stuff here. Have you ever had anybody local look at, you know, quoting on this for you?
It's been several years ago since I bid out the agency work on this, yes.
And when does this go on effect?
Uh, it'll be July one.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, Dan.
Currently, we're looking at renewal on our Travelers Insurance Policy, which covers all our buildings, automobiles, property employment practices. And the premium increases that they're proposing is due basically to trend increase, nothing really in error because of claims from our past. The recommended actual, the premium increase they're looking to go to is three hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred and nine dollars. It was a difference what I proposed, or gave to you on Monday when I prepared my presentation. The difference overall from last year to this year is five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Travelers is, we're really limited because of our exposure in utilities, particularly gas, on what company, so we can look at. The agent did look at another company, One Beacon, and they came in actually higher than the Travelers did. I looked at a couple of different alternatives with raising our deductible. This renewal does raise the auto physical damage deductible from one thousand to two thousand dollars, and I recommend doing that change in deductible. It's minor. I looked at deductible changes in the prop, in the buildings, from going to ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, a number of different other factors that keep the premium down, but that's why I recommend, just for budgetary items, I know Jay and I spoke about this on the medical side. On the budget, there's about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars budgeted in our property and casualty insurance. The difference between that and what's the Travelers' cost, and we also pay some bonded insurance for the cashiers, and we have a different policy, a smaller policy. But basically, there's about ninety-five thousand dollars I use for deductibles that we have for minor incidents and accidents we have during the year. And just to go and give you a heads up, we have about three hundred and twenty thousand currently in that balance. That's a separate balance in case we have big claims like we talked about earlier. If something comes up, we have a premium or cash setting aside for those, and that's just something kind of built up over the years. I've tried to build that up, and all our department heads, you know, we, we hold our employees accountable for actions we have on auto accidents and everything else like that, but do recommend to continue on with Travelers Insurance.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question. Dan, on any given year, approximate number of automobiles we'd have damaged to, trucks and cars?
Uh, any given year, we probably average only about less than ten. We're, our rating's very good. The major, the most, the highest claim we had the past couple of years is actually at Opera Street Gym where the fire started from one of the fans. Our cost was ten thousand dollars. Got the cost of the insurance company about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was the largest claim we've had over the past several years, but auto, it's like I said, it's less than, less than ten annually. And we have several hundred out there that are driven daily.
You have a question?
Yes.
How much confidence do you have in the Travelers Insurance?
That's very good. It's A-plus rated. I, I don't look at anything less than A-rated carrier because we might, need to make sure that if we have to go there, if we have a claim, we need to make sure they got the money to back up anything, and we do have a five million dollar umbrella policy, so if we did have a significant claim, they need to have the pockets to pay that claim.
Never did find out, but when I was working, Travelers dropped the whole eleven thousand employees where I was working, and couldn't ever get an answer as to why they dropped this, because it was not time for renewal.
Right.
They just dropped us in the middle of the stream.
Some, there, there's a lot of things go into the insurance, like, I don't know what happened at your particular time.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Dan. Next item is concerning the Georgia Department of Corrections. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Take up the mountain last night, by the way?
Well, I waited at the parking lot during the hailstorm and thunderstorm, but no, no hiking last night.
I wondered, too.
Uh, this, uh, this is a contract, well, one contract for each of our five correctional crews. That would be three crews for the Public Works and two crews for Parks Recreation. They are a, the contract amount is thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars per crew. This is the twelfth year that we've had them, and they, they do an awful lot of work for, I know for the Parks and Recreation Department, I know for Public Works also. We have all the documentation we need as far as E-verify. I recommend approval of these contracts.
Okay. Chair will entertain any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, sir.
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor. This, with our engineering recommendation for Pettit Creek Trail Phase Two project, we have a, well, a bridge we have to put down over a small tributary of Pettit Creek. Our engineering, Southland Engineering has found the best deal for us, which is a renovated railcar frame made into a bridge. This bridge will come out of Colorado, Paragon Bridge Works. Again, this is for the Pettit Creek Trail Phase Two project, and I recommend, recommend approval of this, of this purchase. The bridge will be purchased by the city. It will be installed by the, by the contractor when, when the, that'll be part of the, the contract for the, for the construction bids, is the setting of this bridge.
Okay. And a budgeted item, correct?
Budget item, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Greg, what, what does a railcar frame bridge look like?
It's like a regular bridge. Uh, it's a, it's, it's, this is a, this is a forty-foot, uh, bridge, uh...
Wow.
Well, it's just a, it's a simple, it's a simple bridge. It's got, uh, treated lumber for, for post, well, it's got metal, metal posts, but treated, treated lumber for the rails. It's, it will be painted a boxcar brown, uh, you know, it's, it's, it'll be, it's certified bridge.
It's a regular bridge. Okay.
It's gonna be a platform that goes over the water and connects land.
But I mean, it sounded like something different.
Well, it's just, it's, it's pretty neat. I mean, it's pretty interesting. Look, after I was investigating...
Sam has put his iPhone to good use and has a picture of one for you.
You can't, you can't see real well, but that's what it is.
And I'm sorry, Greg, did you say the cost of the construction is included in the price? So they're gonna ship it and put it together for...
Well, no, no, the, this is the cost, this, this includes the shipping of it now, but and it, and it'll, it will be, it'll be prefabbed, and it'll be shipped on a, on a truck, and then when it's shipped, it'll be the contractor's responsibility to, to set it.
Thank you.
To pour the abutments and set it.
We look forward to using it, Tom.
We look forward to using it, Tom.
Okay. Any other discussion? Very good. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a regular bridge.
[laughing].
Huh?
Samuel.
A motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Hopefully, it won't have to travel over troubled water.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
The next item is engineering for emergency pump station. Mr. Monax.
Mayor, Council, this item is a contract agreement with Jacobs Engineering, formerly J.J.N.G. The agreement is to provide engineering services for the design and bidding as well as services for EPD construction permitting and land disturbance permitting for an emergency raw water pump station on the Etowah River. The agreement is in an amount not to exceed $432,000. Will be financed by a revenue bond, which will go towards paying for all aspects of this pump station. The Water Department recommends approval of this contract in an amount not to exceed $432,000. We do have the e-verify and save documentation in hand.
Okay. Any questions for Ed on this item?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Is there an actual?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Archer.
Thank you. Is there an actual physical contract that goes with this? There's not one in the?
I don't have that here, so I was going to mention that. We have to get that agreement to, used to be signed by the.
And when you get it, you may want to double-check with Mr. Porter, because there's some additional immigration and compliance language that we like to have in all the city contracts now, to make sure that's in there.
Subject to approval.
What I have in hand is just a scope of services, the actual contract agreement. I'm still waiting for that to come, contract agreement document to come.
Y'all can approve it subject to approval by the city manager, that it meets all the terms and conditions, or you can wait until you actually have a formal contract in front of you to review and approve. That's strictly y'all's choice.
Okay. My personal recommendation would be that we do the first option, which is subject to city manager's approval. If anybody on council, if there's no further discussion, council can make a motion, whatever form or fashion they'd like to.
Motion to approve. Subject to the city manager's approval. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Our next item is reimbursement to Parker Systems. Stan?
Yes, Mayor. The fiber department had been billing Parker Systems through Georgia Public Web in their couple of locations. Part of the agreement was with Georgia Public Web, and they paid, Parker paid them, and we got money back out of it. This, this agreement had been going on for about 31 months. We actually got the money of about $31,000. Since there was confusion as to when we would disconnect our services, and between us and GPW and David Parker, we came up to an agreement, I met with both firms, and came up to a resolution that we pay back $15,000 of that money we received. GPW paid a share back, and David Parker basically getting about $27,000. But this agreement basically between us and David Parker, and it releases us for any future liability. We did collect the money. I do recommend approval of this agreement.
And Mayor, the agreement y'all are approving is slightly different than what's in the agenda. There was a typo in that, that is, that has been corrected at reference to Georgia Corporation instead of Limited Liability Company, and so y'all will be approving that version.
Yes, yes, it would just be Parker Systems instead of Parker Systems LLC.
Okay. Any discussion?
Was this this year?
It's been, over the past couple of years it's taken place, and because of the way the payment was made to GPW, and then we got a portion of it back, and then Parker, Parker actually paid us a thousand, and paid GPW for a portion of the services. It's been going on for like 31 months, and it's brought to the attention, and we kind of resolved the issue with them. I'm not sure why it took so long, but I've asked the fiber department to make sure, look at any of the contracts, make sure everything else is up to speed and it has been. This is kind of one of the things, and we are going to be doing direct services with Parker Systems in the future, not going through GPW.
So I'm assuming they found the mistake, not?
Yeah, Parker Systems actually brought it up to our attention.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have an item to add before we get to the financial report. Do we not?
Yes, if you would like to, Mayor. I'd request you.
How about I request to get that added to the agenda?
Okay.
Very good. Motion to add that item to the agenda?
Subject.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Please proceed.
The item that they've added to the agenda is the city has received an anti-lighting notice in regards to an individual named Cedric Richards. It is recommended at this time that the City of Cartersville deny this claim by resolution, by resolution, which does start the clock running for them to file lawsuit against the city if they so desire in the future.
Okay. Questions, comments, or Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution to deny the claim.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we've got the financial statement. Mr. Tom.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the April 2011 financial report and comparing it to April 2010. The general fund, revenues have decreased over last year's level by about $101,000. Expenses have increased by $1.5 million. This is due mainly to increased personnel expenses, operating expenses, and capital expenses. The capital expenses portion of it is due to the two fire trucks that was purchased back in December. They were originally classified as balance sheet items. We have elected to move them to the capital expense items. Three areas of revenue that I monitor on a monthly basis are the local option sales tax. There's an increase over last year by $179,000. Police fines and forfeiture is an increase over last year by $44,000. And building permits and inspections is a decrease of $18,000. The water and sewer fund, revenues have decreased over last year by two, I'm sorry, $593,000. This is due largely to the capacity fees, lower, lower capacity fees coupled with the lower water sales. Expenses have also decreased by $230,000. This is attributable mostly to lower debt service cost. In the gas fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $2.5 million. This is mainly due to less gas being consumed. Expenses have decreased by $515,000. This is due mainly to the decrease in personnel costs, operating costs, and cost of purchased gas. The electric fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $155,000, while expenses have increased by $1.42 million due largely to the increase in the cost of purchasing electricity and increase in capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $18,000. Expenses have increased by $460,000. This is due to the increase in capital expenditures with those projects that we've got, just about, I believe they're just about done. On the solid waste fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $167,000. This is due to a timing of the receipts of at least pool proceeds, and expenses have decreased by $26,000. This is due to decreases in operations expenses and capital expenses. In the fiber optics fund, revenues have increased from last year by $262,000. This is mainly due to miscellaneous revenues, the Kentucky Data Link, and expenses have increased by $15,000. This is due to a combination of lower statewide telecom communications and should be an increase in capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Okay. Questions for Tom on the financial report?
I got a couple of questions. This is probably just in general, I should ask a long, long, long time ago, but looking at the general fund of revenues, that, that is mainly just the transfers, right? That, that's 100% of transfers from the other departments, right?
It's not totally, totally attributable to that, but some of it is, yes.
Got transfers, got profit tax, got sales tax, there's a bunch of stuff in that.
Yes.
And you answered that question earlier, I think, in the work session. When you look at like the revenue monthly, or for the budget, whatever it may be, the transfers are in the expense.
Correct. They're, they're in the expense of the water fund, and they're on the revenue side of the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other items that needs to come before council this evening? Anyone? Anyone? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Subject.
Adjourn.[1776.63]